I will now call the April 2nd, 2012 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We will stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7, to tonight's City Council meeting. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Unless there are items to be pulled, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We just approved on the Consent Agenda eighteen firework permits for 2012. For those of you in attendance with that, unless you just want to hang around, you may be excused. You're welcome.
Enjoy the game tonight.
All right. Yes. And I would imagine after the next item, we will clear the other third. Next, I'm very proud and privileged to have a presentation by the volunteers and police services. So Sergeant Allen Kent, so are you going to kick it off for us?
I am, thanks sir.
All right, welcome.
Quick PowerPoint, we have a little presentation tonight. On our volunteers at police service, I believe here is a few of our volunteers. We now have thirty-two, but give you a quick history and overview of the VIPS program. Started in 2008, it was an extension of our former non-commissioned officer program. We have logged over thirteen thousand hours of service since 2008, volunteer hours. Few pictures, we were doing some training on the detention area, so they really enjoyed it when we put Doc in the restraint chair in there, so I decided not to put that picture in here. Core group of VIPS program, ten people in the beginning, and went from seventeen to eighty. We currently have thirty-two, and we have about five in going through backgrounds right now. Two of our original VIPS are now full-time law enforcement officers. Yeah, Don does our alarm, Mr. Alarming, and he volunteers and takes care of all of our false alarm reports and our alarm permits. So, major events, 2011, the marriage Christmas tree lighting, seventeen VIPS received Presidential Volunteer Service Awards, Shop with the Blue Springs Cop was just an awesome event. Don Wykoff was Volunteer of the Year. We had now assist, the VIPS assist and actually handle the smart trailer, the radar trailer they take out and put everywhere. We had an incident where one of the officers needed to do something with it, and he said, "It's been so long, I can't remember how to use it." So they do that almost exclusively now. We provide security and guide assistance for the March with the Mayor, the Girls 5K Fun Run, Fall Fun Fest, parking during special events, and assistance at the BBQ Blaze-Off. And there is the smart trailer, and Steve Knowles and Bob Williams usually handle that. Major events in 2011, assisted IT during the remodel of City Hall, helped enter the database for Code Red. We verified all the Blue Springs churches and businesses' emergency contact information. They help us with the annual fallen police officers memorial service. And we have assisted several other agencies, Raytown, Grain Valley, in starting their VIPS program. Doc Golden teaches our alcohol servers classes usually in here on Wednesdays and Sundays. Saves us overtime from me having to come in and do it. So, this year thirty-two VIPS worked a total of five thousand seven hundred ninety-four quarter hours. Department of Labor did a study, and they valued that at twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents an hour. And so our value added for 2011 is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents. It's a very sizable donation in time here. One of our, Mary Kimmelin, doing a child ID event where the kids come in and we get all of their information, give that to the parents, we don't keep any of it. Duties performed, some of those have regular assignments, they come in weekly, sometimes two and three times a week. Others, they just do special events as they come up. Linda Priest helps with the switchboard, especially on Monday night. Don does the alarm permits. We have a VIP that works in the detective unit. We have one works in the property unit, and one that works, or several work in animal control records in the court office. There's one of our parking details that was across the street here, trying to keep us as best we can from getting our cars towed. Some more duties, pin maps, when we do, they get crime locations every day, they usually do this weekly, and put it on a map so that patrol officers can take at a glance where things might be piling up. Armory, they maintain training records and help us clean weapons. We talked about the smart trailer and the crime-free property database for all of our landlords and rental properties. We've more than tripled our number of volunteers, have an office and two computers, which we share with the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Thirty radios, we have uniform safety gear, foul weather gear, we have regular monthly training, and they perform thousands of hours of volunteer service without a single complaint, to my knowledge. And there is the latest picture of the crew.
Good-looking group.
So, they are. So if you guys would like to come up here for a second? Mr. Mayor, the VIPS program will present you with a value-added check for one hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents, which represents fifty-seven hundred and ninety-four and a quarter hours of these fine faults here given to the City of Blue Springs Police Department, and we are so proud to serve.
And I'm so happy and proud that you want to give your time for this great city that we live in, and certainly, it certainly has a value add, not only to the department, but to the City of Blue Springs and all its residents, so thank you so much. So we expect that to be deposited tomorrow. Okay, next we have a public hearing, a vacation of Home Edition, thirty-three oh four Southwest Ligon Road.
Your Honor, for this public hearing, VAC-3-12-3295, have one exhibit to offer, that's a City Council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, location map of proposed area of the vacation affidavit, a publication is advertised in the Examiner March 10, 2012, vacation application with applicant's explanation of the request, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of sight, and copy of letters sent to the property owners notifying them of the public hearing. I'd like to submit these on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of City Council. Give me before this evening is a request to vacate fifty-foot building line on Lot Four, Jacomo Heights subdivision. Property specifically is located at thirty-three oh four Southwest Ligon Road, shown on the map on the overhead. The applicant is here this evening and is representing his parents, actually, as the official property owner. He's looking to add an L-shaped building addition to the north side of the existing home, and the proposed addition will meet the current UDC exterior front setback of twenty-five feet, actually will be located at approximately twenty-six feet. However, there is an existing fifty-foot building line setback from when the property was originally platted back in nineteen sixty-two. So with that, the applicant is requesting to formally vacate that property line as shown on that plat, specifically for Lot Four, and in so doing, will still be able to meet the underlying zoning with the proposed building expansion. The planning commission heard this request last week and recommend approval unanimously, a vote of eight to zero. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Allen? The applicant like to come and be sworn in and testify?
Yeah, I do. Jason Semenon, forty-three, forty-one, Northeast Maple Gate Drive, Lees, Missouri, six-four-zero-six-four.
I guess you, basically, you just like for it to be vacated.
Yes, just with the purchase of the house, we wanted to expand the house, and the best way to aesthetically and, I guess, cost-effectively do that was to do an L shape with it and try to bring the property forward and still keep under that, I guess, twenty-five foot building line, so.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, in support of, in opposition to? Opposition to close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
First reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero five, an ordinance vacating a platted fifty-foot building line located on Lot Four, Jacomo Heights, a subdivision of land in the City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's no?
Second reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero five, an ordinance vacating a platted fifty-foot building line located on Lot Four, Jacomo Heights, a subdivision of land in the City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number forty-three eighty-three.
Next, we have an introduction of Bill Forty-two oh one.
Hi, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero one, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, fourth plat, lots two zero four through two seventeen, two eighty-eight through three oh two, and tract D three, I, J, L, and M.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's no?
Second reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero one, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, fourth plat, lots two zero four through two one seven, two eighty-eight through three oh two, and tracks D three, I, J, L, and M.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number forty-three eighty-four.
Next, Councilman Bowerman would like to introduce Bill Forty-two oh six.
Yes, sir, Your Honor, I would like to, thank you.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero six, an ordinance amending Section two-one-five-one-four-zero of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, concerning rabies vaccinations for dogs and cats and veterinarian tags.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's no?
Your Honor?
Oh.
That's right, I wanted to say something.
Well, we haven't started yet, if you want to do it on the next one?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's no?
Second reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero six, an ordinance amending Section two-one-five-one-four-zero of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, concerning rabies vaccination for dogs and cats and veterinarian tags.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Councilman Bowerman?
Yes, thank you. There's a pause. To the council and the mayor and city staff, and the citizens of our great city, we discussed this topic in the Citizens Advisory Board several times. We had people come and speak to us. It's not often in our busy world that we have things that save time, like this, and for pet owners and modern veterinary medicine, now they have that capability of, instead of three times, once every three years, having a vaccination, now they can do it once every three years. So this is a good thing for our city, and again, it's voluntary, the pet owners don't have to do it, but we feel this is a good thing, and I just wanted to add the comments to that, so it's good support all the way around.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number forty-three eighty-five.
Next, we have an introduction, reading of Bill Forty-two oh seven.
I'd like to introduce her, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero seven, an ordinance amending Table Three A, no parking at any time authorized by Section three-five-five-zero-one-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs by amending the paragraph prohibiting parking on a part of Jefferson Street.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's no?
Second reading of Bill Number Forty-two zero seven, an ordinance amending Table Three A, no parking at any time authorized by Section three-five-five-zero-one-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs by amending the paragraph prohibiting parking on a part of Jefferson Street.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number forty-three eighty-six.
That brings us to Merrill Announcements. I want to remind her about it, tomorrow's the municipal elections. There are a few things, not a lot, on the ballot tomorrow. Central Jackson County Fire Protection District has a bond issue for those living in that part. Prairie Township Fire Protection District has a board of directors election, and the mayor's election for Blue Springs, as well as the Metropolitan Community College Board of Trustees. So the polls open from six AM to seven PM, and we want to remind people to get out and vote. That brings us to Thoughts to Punda. Tonight's Thoughts to Punda comes from Henry Ford, and I quote, "You can't build a reputation on what you're going to do," end quote. That brings us to the visitors section. I have two visitors' appearance forms, one from Mr. James Newport. You want to come forward, Mr. Newport?
Yes, sir.
Then I want to remind you that in your presentation, we're going to be very respectful.
I won't say anything that's never been said before the Supreme Court of the United States.
Well, I will be the judge of that this evening. But, okay, well, the reason I'm here is I have an issue, and I brought it up at the last City Council meeting, and that I've tried to explain to you, I feel I've been a victim for longstanding problem with organized crime, and that this organized crime has migrated its influence from one agency to another, and at the time now, is what's happening, it's helping influence adversely towards me how the City of Blue Springs Police Department has processed what I think are valid and reasonable complaints of violations of law that continue to occur at my home. And today, I'm just going to address one single issue, and this has to do with the police report that was taken, and I have Exhibit A, it would be a picture of what occurred at the end of it, and I have a copy of the police report, and if you get a chance, I'll pass these out, if you don't mind. But I also have about three or four minutes of the certified nine-one-one call that I made to explain how this thing's developing. It starts from before there's really an incident to, look, it looks kind of suspicious, and then we have a problem, boom. So, and I think recent history has shown that sometimes people need to look a little more closely at what's going on before guns become in play, when there's neighborhood problems longstanding over and over again, and people feel real, true threats are being directed at them. In this case, real, true threats, for a very long time, have been directed at me, including shooting my home and killing my witnesses, as I mentioned before, and hit-and-runs against me that have occurred in multiple jurisdictions. Now, when these things come up to my house, when bullets fly through my windows at my home, when I have children in my house, and the police department puts it down as past property damage, that's whitewashing what's going on. And then when I have six people in a gang who've repeatedly threatened me, repeatedly caused incidents at my home, six of them, two adults and four teens, come charging up to me, demanding me to know why I'm harassing them, this is at my home, and backing me into the house while I'm on nine-one-one calling. See, I see something going on here, and I have to back into my house, and I had to rely upon my attorney, Mr. Bushmaster AR-15, to represent me, to get them off my property and away from threatening me. Now, the way Blue Springs Police Department has seen fit to take this incident of one man defending his own property, his home, from the threat of six teens and adults, a combination of gang, was to put this down as a non-criminal incident report. Well, I felt I was assaulted. I was put in real, genuine fear of great bodily harm by people who have already issued threats to me, and had already done damage to my property and worked hard against my interests. And the police department has failed and continues to fail and refuse to follow up on this complaint. Now, the complaint has gone because there's been like thirty incidences at my home, and I've decided, well, every time I see something going on, I'm calling, you know? I want this thing stopped. But the problem is, is that when they have laid down a foundation of what I consider to be poor police work, that I consider to be biased police work, that to the impartial third-party observer, shows me to be outlandish, unreasonable, dangerous, and any number of negative connotations, for a man who's raised six children, who has a wife and kids, lived the same house in Blue Springs since nineteen eighty-five. And for that, that's why I brought this. What this is, is a photograph of the end of the incident, and I was on the phone when I took this picture, and this is the police report of the non-criminal incident. And the coloring of the report is, I'm a dangerous person because I defended my home, when I backed to the wall, back to the wall. You want to leave that material with our deputy city administrator? Because I think we get the picture of what you're saying, and certainly we're listening to your side of the story, and I have not gotten that report from our side. You know, there are two sides to every story. That's correct. Certainly, we're not going to jump to judgment until we know the complete story. And that's what I'm asking for, is that for this incident, because it's one of the most profound ones, and it is just part of a pattern, but I need this incident reexamined, re-investigated, the parties identified, because the parties aren't on, the parties identified. Well, you know, normally, we have our procedures on how we handle those kinds of things, so, you know, certainly, we don't need you to instruct us on how to go about doing business, because we have professionals that know how to do that. So anyway, we get the point. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I just offer this, Chief McCoy's currently out of town, and Captain Snyder is sitting in here. I will be happy to follow up tomorrow with Captain Snyder, review, and Mr. Newport, you and I've had several conversations at City Hall as well, so we're not strangers to conversations, but I'll be happy to review the facts of this case with Chief McCoy. We do have a thorough and very detailed process for handling citizen complaints with regard to internal affairs or any issues that come to our department, and in unique and rare cases where we believe that there's additional information that needs to be sought or we need to go external to the organization, we have done that in certain cases, and I will be happy to review this case and determine whether or not this would be appropriate for doing such a thing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed Newport. And what would you like? And what would you like for me to do with these exhibits? Give it to Mr. Bellamy, you want to give it to a city attorney? And I would actually like you guys to take a look at, too, if you could. I know you have your internal affairs thing, but... I'm kind of a victim of the political machine, not this one, not this one. Yeah, no, you, we're...
Mr. Newport, we will be watching the information you leave for us.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Helen Newport. And what you will offer be something in addition to what Mr. Newport, is that your father?
Yes, I just want to add a couple things.
In addition of what he's presented?
So, I've been a witness to quite a few of these incidents, and there have been accurate police reports, but there have also been some that do seem quite biased, and I've noticed some errors as well. And this particular incident he's talking about, these people were very close to our house, and it was really threatening, and there's numerous incidents like this. So I really would like it to be reexamined because it not only affects my dad, but it affects everybody in the house. And obviously, I don't like it.
Mr. Johnson assured us we're going to take a very close look at it and...
And, thank you. Just one more thing, though, is that whenever we get police reports that are kind of skewed, it also affects our cases to get protection from things like these. If we could have them reexamined, then it'd make it a lot easier.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for having the courage to come and talk to us this evening.
Thank you.
Those are the only visitors' appearance forms I have. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Good adjourn.